Testing, testing.
Can you hear me now?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 13th Governing Board Meeting for the Glendale Elementary School District. Please let them in and show that we have all five board members currently present and accounted for. Ms. Sagata Jones, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, President Martinez, members of the board. No, there are not.
With that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right. Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. O'Haramio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And a chair votes aye. Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the first part of our agenda, our special recognition. Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, if we can step down from the dais and we'll do those presentations. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. For those of you that are joining us for the first time, each month we do an attendance award to the school that has the best student attendance, and it's a traveling trophy. So this month, the attendance trophy goes to Discovery. Let's take a -- do you have any more Discovery family with you? Is this it? We have some Discovery students here. Come on up. You're the ones that make this happen. Where's my little Stax student? Come on up. Come on. There you go. Great. Thank you. All right, thank you. You can let her hold it. There you go. Our next, our next award that we do for those of you that join us the first time is we do a Just Because Award. And that Just Because Award, we randomly select a staff member and student, and we just hit the button and say, "Give me one staff member, give me one student." And then we, I just want to say, "Thank you for choosing GSD, where you choose to be employed and where you choose to send your students to schools." So, and that's all sponsored by our Gusto Foundation. So we'll begin with our student. Our student is a kindergarten student from American. Janice Newman, would you please come up? And family and friends of American, please come up. Okay, I told you you're going to get some more surprises. So this is what you're going to get, okay? Let's look inside here. This little tub, you have chocolate, and you have taffy, and you have kindness crayons, because in GSD, we believe in kindness. So those are kindness. And then you're going to get this sign here, and it says, "Just Because." You're the -- yeah, it's almost as tall as you. And it's "Just Because," and we want you to put this out in your front yard or by your door at your home, okay? And then you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to come around. What time do you go to bed?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock? Okay, well, I think the meeting might be over by eight. So soon as it's over, I'm going to zoom as fast as I can, and I'm going to run out and honk my horn, and you run out in your jammies and hold this and take a picture. How's that? Good. Good. All righty. This is for you, okay? But we're going to take some pictures, and then you get to choose something out of the GSD treasure box. Remember? I told you you would get another surprise, all right? All right. And you get a Just Because, you get a Just Because, a Just Because, too, for your room, okay? You have a lot of things, you know. Okay, let's have family. Let's do pictures. Family in the mail. Oh, family, family. Come on up. There you go. Thank you for coming and supporting. How about some chocolate? Yours is in the tub. Got it? Look, now he's, look, now is a smile. Hey, 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 smile, smile, smile. Should have brought the prop out earlier. Oh, you get the treasure box, treasure box. Janice, you get something else, remember? Whatever you want. You get to choose one of those things. I knew you were going to go for that. All right. Got it? Okay, thank you. Next, we do our employee. And our employee this, this month is Raymond Kellogg. He's a, from transportation, a bus driver. He goes by Ray Ray. So Ray Ray, if you'll come up, please. And your transportation family, please come up. Thank you so much for everything you do. Absolutely. You're going to get that? Yeah, let's do pictures. Twins. Oh, man, you need, you need to get those two, because they get confused all the time. There you go. I can't. Sit down. There you go. Oh, my god.
Don't, don't come in the middle of the night. I'll get in trouble.
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Thank you so much. And tomorrow is our Transportation Day, where we celebrate our transportation people. So perfect timing, perfect timing. So thank you so much. Thanks, Ray. I know you need to go home. I know you got to drive a bus early in the morning.
Go get some doughnuts in the parking lot. Somebody else's parking lot. And somebody else's bus.
Okay, so those are our special recognitions. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hodegian. She's going to begin the presentation for our, both our Spanish and English Spelling Bee winners.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Norma Hodegian. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and we are going to be honoring our wonderful Spelling Bee winners. I wanted to start off by saying that we're so excited to celebrate all of our Spelling Bee participants. We had participants from all over the district. But before that, I want to acknowledge that we had wonderful Spelling Bee coordinators at each site, and I would like to acknowledge and invite her up, Mrs. Rebecca Maureen. Come on up. She was our district's Spelling Bee coordinator. And she's going to help us out today. And so a little bit about spelling bees. Did you know that the first spelling bee ever took place in 1825? And since then, we have been doing this as a tradition in all of our schools. And so we're very excited to celebrate all of our Spelling Bee winners. So we're going to start off, and Ms. Maureen, if I could give you these certificates here, they're in the order that I'm going to announce the names here. We're going to start off by acknowledging one of our students who was unable to be here tonight. He was our third-place winner, Vicente Romero Villa, an eighth grader from Don Menzendig. Let's give him a round of applause. Also, and yes, here with us this evening, our second-place winner for the district's Spelling Bee, seventh grader from Challenger Elementary School, Fernando Morales Mata. Come on up, Fernando. Thank you. Congratulations. Excellent job. I think he has to, or I don't know what. Okay, Tola Mala. Okay, perfect. All right, perfect. Thank you. All right, our first-place winner from a fifth grader at Discovery Elementary School who spelled these words correctly for champ, for the championship, infomercial and sledgehammer, was Samara Ramirez Bejarano. All right. And we also were so happy this year to include our dual-language programs in doing their own spelling bee, but in Spanish. So we're very excited to announce the winners. So what we did there is we invited third through eighth graders, two students from each school, to come here to the district and participate in the spelling bee. And it was the first time we've ever done it. And so we, it was a fun event, and we wanted to acknowledge the students from this group as well. And we did a first place and a second place. So our second-place winner was a fourth-grade student from Jack Elementary School, Kamala Alvarado Araya. And, sorry, just a second here. I'm sure I have the right information. And then our champion, who spelled the following words correctly, prolifico and provecho. And it is a student from Horizon Elementary School, fourth, I'm sorry, fourth grade as well, and that is Ruby Cabrera Ramirez. And so again, just, it is so hard to spell words correctly when you're hearing them. I'm going to tell you this. I think all of us would struggle with that. So let's give a round of applause to all of our Spelling Bee winners. And for our students here, Vicente, Fernando, and Samara, they did participate also in the regional spelling bee, and they did an amazing job at that as well. So one more round of applause for them, because they work really hard.
Thank you, Ms. Hodegian. Could we please have family members come up and school family come up as well, and we'll do some photos? Yeah, I'm just going to go this way. Just for the two kids up there. And everybody? Thank you for supporting your sister. Thank you for supporting your sister. You're welcome. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you so much. That's it. We can move back up to the dais. Families, you're welcome to go. I know it's probably, you're probably hungry and ready for dinner. So please, thank you for coming out, and you're welcome, you're welcome to, to leave, if you'd like.
All right. Nothing like celebrating kids that can spell better than I can, in two languages. All right. Moving on in our agenda, we do have some call to the public this evening. So I'll just read off this blurb here. "The public is invited to address the board on any issue within its jurisdiction, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Governing board members are not permitted to discuss or take legal action on matters raised during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. However, the law permits board members to do the following at the conclusion of the open call to the public: respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the board, ask a staff to review the matter, or ask that the matter be put on a future agenda. Those wishing to address the board should complete a call to the public form and submit it to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be provided three minutes to address the board unless provided other direction by the board. At the outset, the speaker's remarks, the speaker should state his or her name." Ms. Robin Begay?
Good evening, Superintendent Sagata Jones and members of the board. My name is Robin Begay. I am a special education teacher at Desert Garden Preschool in our self-contained universal preschool class. This is my fifth year with this district and my nineteenth year overall in education. I am here to talk about the pro-special education stipends for the 25, 26 school year. I first want to highlight the importance and impact of preschool special education teachers. Early childhood education is a vital period of development when young learners' brains are especially receptive to their learning environments. It lays the foundation for young learners to develop skills and concepts that prepare them to be successful in school and life. GSD's, G E S D's vision is a diverse community coming together to lay the foundation for unrivaled achievement. The individualized support and education that we provide is important. I'm here to ask you to please delay voting pertaining to the proposed special education stipends until this matter can be looked at further, so there is equitable pay among all self-contained teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Ms. Jessie Walker?
Good evening, Superintendent Sagata Jones, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jessie Walker, and this is my eighth year teaching in G E S D. I am currently a universal special education preschool at Desert Garden. I'm here this evening as well to talk about the proposed special education stipends for the 2025, 2026 school year, which is on the agenda to vote on this evening. On the proposed special education stipends for next school year, it is recommended that there be an increase in the stipend amount for special education teachers, which we greatly appreciate. However, the stipend amounts being proposed for self-contained sped teachers with students in kindergarten through eighth grade, and the stipend amount being proposed for our special education self-contained teachers are not equitable despite our job responsibilities being the same. The proposed stipends recommend that K-8 self-contained sped teachers, no matter what program they teach, receive $10,000, while self-contained preschool sped teachers receive $5,000. Just like every other self-contained sped classroom in the district, in our preschool classrooms, we have students with a variety of disabilities and support needs. Every one of our students has an IAP, and we are the most often our students' first experience with school. It is our job to provide crucial early intervention. Our job responsibilities for us as sped preschool teachers are the same as K-8 self-contained teachers in our district. We provide direct instruction for students' individual IAP goals, as well as teach preschool pre-academic standards. We manage the often intense behavioral needs of our students in our classroom. We write progress reports for each student four times a year. We hold IAP meetings yearly for every student, as well as additional transition meetings for students going to kindergarten. Currently, I have 22 students on my caseload. My AM class has 12 students, and my PM class has 10. This class size is equal or greater than other self-contained classrooms in the district. All of our self-contained teachers in our district do a tremendous amount of work, and we deserve to be compensated equally. We are asking tonight for you to delay voting on the proposed special education stipends until they can be discussed further. We would like clarification on why preschool self-contained teachers in our district are in a different pay category than the K-8 self-contained sped teachers. We are asking for the special education stipends to be equitable for all self-contained sped teachers in G E S D from preschool through eighth grade. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our last call to the public this evening, Ms. Kimberly Murphy?
Good evening, Superintendent Sagata Jones and esteemed board members. My name is Kimberly Murphy. I have 30 years of teaching experience, 24 which have been spent right here in Glendale Elementary School District as a preschool self-contained special education teacher. I am here to address the inequity of the proposed stipends for preschool self-contained special education teachers. Our district's vision is focused on building a strong foundation for student success, and preschool special education teachers are the cornerstone of that foundation. We provide the earliest interventions, identify developmental delays, create individualized learning plans, collaborate closely with families and therapists to prepare the children for the kindergarten curriculum. We are also now often managing more students with complex behaviors, and with a third of our classrooms understaffed, we're often needing to manage the caseloads of those classrooms concurrently. Despite the critical work we do, the proposal to offer a $10,000 stipend for K through eight self-contained teachers while offering only $5,000 to preschool self-contained classrooms suggests that the very foundation of student success is being undervalued. If we can't retain highly-qualified preschool special education teachers due to inequitable pay, the district's vision to lay an unrivaled foundation will be compromised. I respectfully urge the board to pause the voting to discuss and adjust the stipend to $10,000 for all self-contained special education programs as we all work hand in hand to ensure the success of our students. Strong programs begin with fair compensation, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on into the next part of our agenda, the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or comments before moving forward?
I have a question. So, what was discussed in the public comment is on here, is that something we are able to delay, or is that something that there's a time component where we have to approve it now?
That's the board's decision. It's on the agenda for this evening.
And is that Item L under the consent agenda? Under 2025 to 2026?
Yes, it is a subset of Item L. Would you, would you motion to pull that to discuss separately?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to pull Item L from the consent agenda to discuss separately.
Okay, we do need a second for that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Bartels, oh wait. This vote is to consider Item L separately from the rest of the consent agenda items. Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
I will vote aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, we're going to discuss Item L separately. Now, considering the rest of the consent agenda items, Items A through K, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda, Items A through K.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, moving on to Item L from the consent agenda. There are the 25-26 salary schedule items, of which there are nine different items on there. Now, it is my understanding that there is a committee that works to put together these dollar amounts for the stipends that we're talking about in question, correct?
Ms. Bartels, yes, members of the board, and I can, Ms. Valdez, is, that comes out of HR services, so any questions that you have, she'll be able to answer for you.
Now, I did pull this item. Is there a set, what's the deadline to, like, when we need to approve these salary schedules? Like, when's the absolute last day we have to do this?
Salary schedules for the stipends come periodically, so if there's changes, we bring those changes to you. As you know, as we brought this change, as we discussed at the study session on Saturday, with trying to look at the special education and the contracted services, so that's where the salary adjustment was made, as you'll see the other items. So, as far as a timeframe, there's not a set timeframe that it has to be approved. We try to get those current ones done for the following school year, but Ms. Valdez can comment as she would like.
No, you said it perfectly.
Okay. Now, I come from a behavioral background. I've worked with special education students in public schools, and I currently work with special education students, so this is a topic that is very close to me, and I do understand what goes on in the classroom, the amount of help, and the workload that is placed on you, so. It's come to my understanding that we do have a little bit of extra wiggle room with our budget now. I'm not sure how we can maneuver that, or if we even have enough to compensate, but I would love to table this salary schedule so that there could be more time to discuss it and, you know, maybe come to a consensus or a compromise if we don't, if, you know, if we don't have enough funds, but I will motion.
Not too well. Yeah, I'm kind of on board with you. While I, we've kind of got information on, you know, the discrepancy in the salaries, so to speak, but I am a little concerned at the fact that you are, you don't, there's, you don't understand, I mean, not understand, but that maybe there needs to be some more clarification, or maybe you need to have a discussion to maybe, you know, voice more of your concerns and see if there can be some kind of an understanding, or, you know, what else can be done, but I'm all for there being a little more discussion amongst all of you with the superintendent or, you know, a member of the executive team, and, you know, to voice your concerns and maybe have a discussion about that, so I'm all in favor of that, maybe putting, you know, tabling it just for a while. So, what you can do is you can table it, or you can approve the salary schedule, pulling that part of the salary schedule off, so you approve the rest of the salary schedule. So, we would need a motion to do it that way. And then, that means the salary schedule is approved, except for the piece of the preschool that would get pulled, and then, the extra duty, I'm sorry.
It would be special education.
These two, right?
Yeah, you have to pull the whole item.
That whole document.
Yeah, just pull that.
All right, so I make a motion to approve, to, I make a motion to pull the stipend pay in GSD, how do I word this? I make a motion to approve, to pull the extra duty pay for...
For, yeah, the whole thing.
Okay.
Schedule, with the exception of, yeah, with the exception of...
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the salary schedule with the exception of the extra duty pay slash extracurricular activities slash supplementary assignment scheduled for the 2025 to the 2026 school year.
Yes, that's how it goes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
For the purpose of understanding within the system, I will vote aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair will vote aye. Thank you. So, that extra duty pay will come up on another future agenda, so do watch for that while discussions about how that, how we want that process to work continue forward. Moving on in our agenda, we don't have any reports or informational items or other action items. We're moving on to our future meetings and events. Ms. Sagata Jones, what's coming up?
President Martina's members of the board, so we do have scheduled the February 27th meeting. You'll see just renewals. The entrance pieces there are listed on there, so that's all that will be coming to you on that, on that meeting. We may also have, we're trying to fill some positions as well that are posted, so you may see positions posted at that time, and then ask for the recommendation of those to be approved.
Any other comments on the upcoming schedules? No? All right, moving on to a summary of current events, Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, President Martina, members of the board, lots of things happening. I want to recognize the student artwork in the back. We have it from Desert Garden, Desert Spirit, and thank you to our staff and students for presenting that artwork to us. It's always nice to have that at our, at our sites. We also have Read to the Final... Am I not, is it dead? All right, we'll go this way. All right, let me start, now I can hear it. Let me start again. I want to say thank you to Desert Garden, Desert Spirit for their student artwork in the back. We appreciate the staff and the students and the work that they do. It's always nice to have it displayed. We have Read to the Final Four, the top 32 schools in the state of Arizona, which are Desert Spirit, Landmark, Smith, and Sunset Vista, so congratulations. They'll be moving We also have, we received recognition this week that Burton has been named by the professional learning communities as a promising practice school, so thank you for Burton's staff. I want to announce that it is Love the Bus tomorrow. Not only is that, it's also Valentine's Day, so I wish you a Happy Heart Day. Hope the love bug comes and visits you. He doesn't bite you, but he comes and visits you, and the Love the Bus Day, we want to say a special thank you to all our transportation, our drivers, our dispatchers, our monitors, our office staff, everybody that helps that run smoothly. Christian, thank you so much for your work that you do in that, so we appreciate that. I also want to announce that St. Mary's, we do that every other Wednesday, and with our food drives to help our families, and the other day, it was on the 12th, we did that. There were 431 households that we provided boxes to, and close to 2,200 individuals received those food distributions from us, so we appreciate the work. Dr. Latif, thank you, and Dennis, we appreciate your work for doing that. I know, Ms. Bartels, you come out and help prepare that, and our staff kids helped to do that as well, so we're excited about that. Also, I want to recognize, yesterday I had the honor of attending the ASFRA conference where all of our school directors of communications come out, and they're awarded for the work that they do, so I'd like for us to step down. I'd like to recognize Adriana of our other Parsons, our amazing director of communications, for the honors that she received yesterday. She walked away with, I think, about four or five, so could we come down and honor her,
So, the first award goes to Glendale Elementary School District Publications and Digital Media Video Singular, so Adriana. The next one goes to Publications and Digital Media Special Purpose Publication. That's for the coloring book that we did for NHR Travels with that, so that one goes. And then also, another one, Publications and Digital Media, and this one's for the Mosaic Mind Student Enrollment Campaign, all right? And then we have the Award of Excellence presented to Glendale Elementary School District. It really should say Adriana on their branding image package, GSD, Mosaic Minds, and All-in for All Kids Brand Identity. Could not be more proud of you. She, let me just say this. It was an honor to attend that, and also I need to thank, where's Emma, where are you? Folcortico Dance, Yesterday Horizon, they were a hit. They were absolutely amazing, so thank you for your students and teacher for doing that. It was great. It was very well received. I have to say, when we went up, they announced the awards, and you go up, and Adriana went up, and she dragged me up there, and I'm happy to stand by her, but she's a one-man team, and I'm standing there watching. There is four, five, six, seven, eight people in these other districts that do what she does, and she could have received all the awards because she does them better. She truly does, and she's a one-man team, so thank you so much for everything you do. All right, so let's take some pictures, all right? Wait a minute, we always have school families. Enrique, you're part of this department. Get up here. What's the matter with you, sitting back there? Are you translating for us? Come on up. He always checking out the radio stations for us. Yes, because Adriana always says, somehow she needs to do it so we get the right picture, but that would have to be a selfie, but I did, I did post it with Instagram. I didn't even have to have her do it. I did it myself, so I was very proud of that. So, thank you so much, Adriana. We appreciate everything you do. I think really we have about two more they didn't give us as well, so, there you go.
With that, I just want to say thank you to the staff and the work that you do every day. We appreciate that. It's going to be a three-day weekend, well-deserved for everybody. Thank you for coming out and wearing red. I've had you wear it a couple times. I know I, somebody, Alfredo, had to go buy a shirt, and he was, and he went home and washed that one to wear it again, and so obviously Christian and Mike only have one, the same color. So, I do appreciate that, and as I said, the reason we're doing that, it is Healthy Heart Month, and also it was, we did the prevention also for healthy heart for women, and heart disease also was last Friday. With that, the real reason we were doing that is, we did the Bestie cereal. The board has that too. The staff had that at the last meeting as well, and we served Cheerios for breakfast, but the reason really I'm doing it is for a campaign for hiring, for marketing, as I stated before, because it's 11 consecutive years that we've not raised the health premiums for our employees, and that's unheard of, so. And I would, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the members that are responsible for the incredible wellness program that we, we have in our HR department. They oversee wellness. We have Debbie's here, Melissa is here. I don't see anybody else from Wellness is here. Also on the trust board, Mary Ann sits on the trust board and helps make those very difficult decisions and doing what's best for our employees, but we have an incredible wellness program. We won awards for that, so I will, after tonight, we do the rest of our photos, I will put on Instagram. We've done a video recording this morning, or this afternoon sometime, the one-man team did with me, and, and you have to understand about Adriana, nothing is planned out with me, and you all know that about me. It's like I just send a text and say, we need to do this. As this morning, I'm texting her, hey, this afternoon, we need to do this video, and of course she does it, but that's the purpose of it, so again, thank you to everyone for what you do for our wellness program and the trust board as well. Amazing job, and with that, have a wonderful three-day
All right, moving on to the governing board report. We'll start way down there at the kids' table. Ms. Bartels?
That means I'm really young.
Are your, are your feet dangling on that chair right now?
Only if I raise the chair way up high. I just want to say, you know, tomorrow is Valentine's Day. It's the state's birthday. We have President's Day on Monday, so enjoy the three-day weekend, but as a personal reminder, please, please, please pay attention yourself, ask your neighbors, ask your family to monitor and be cautious when you go through school zones. I can't tell you how many times I see just insanity driving past me in a school zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Well, a big shout-out to the Transportation Department on your day tomorrow. The work that you do is just so important, so we are just very, very grateful and honored to have each and every one of you working for us. Don't have much, except there's been a lot of illness, I'm sure, flying through the schools, a lot of absenteeism, and now it's gone through our household, so the fever, the cold, so you've got a nice three-day weekend. Everybody take care of yourselves, and just have a, have a nice weekend.
Ms. Pimentel?
Going to reiterate, Happy Transportation Day. We have an amazing transportation team, and they get up early, and they, they deal with everything, the crazy drivers, and I used to be one of the crazy parents chasing my kids, so dealing with the crazy parents, speaking from experience from the parent's side. Happy 113th birthday to Arizona. Tomorrow's Arizona's birthday, and I always kind of want to remember that, Valentine's Day, Arizona's birthday. It's a lot of love right there. And congratulations to Adriana. I, people who don't know her, they may see her coming up and taking pictures. That is the smallest thing she does for our district, and when she takes pictures, she makes us look good, number one, but number two, all the amazing videos she does, the shirts we wear, she is just, she's a one-woman team, and we would love to support you in any way we can, and we know those awards are more than deserved. Congratulations.
You forgot the game.
You forgot the game she makes us play.
And yes, GSDopoly, yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Haddamio?
Happy Transportation Day for me as well. One of my favorite memories from going to school was my bus driver, he'd always greet me, ask me how my day was and even when, you know, I would miss the bus and stay after school and waiting for a ride, he'd come up to me like, Hector, do you need a ride? And sometimes I'd say yes and he'd give me a ride and he, he was just a overall like fantastic part of my, my school routine. And also, congratulations to Adriana, I've gotten to know you over the past couple of years and not only are you amazing at what you do, but you're also a great human being and I love being around you, so congratulations and thank you.
All right, I will, ditto, 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 ditto. Congratulations to all of our spelling bee winners. That is my, like, number one anxiety for doing anything ever since I was in the fourth grade and bounced out of the spelling bee on my first word, that I still don't know how to spell correctly, so there's that. Thank you to all the transportation staff, enjoy your day tomorrow and lastly, everyone enjoy your Valentine's Day tomorrow, it's a three-day weekend, enrollment is declining, you know what you need to do. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.